All right, so it's 6:02 Tamika. Thank you everyone for coming this evening. This is, I'd like to open the meeting for the zoning board of Rutland, zoning board of appeals of Rutland tonight. First up on the agenda is the meeting minutes from a May 11th meeting that we had. Has anybody, everybody had a chance to review those? Any questions or issues?
They look good to me, Chris.
It's good. Do we have a motion to accept the minutes?
I'll make a motion to accept those minutes.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Paul, second. Any discussion? All right, hearing none. Let's have a roll call. On favor of accepting the minutes as prepared, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. No nays? Okay, so that carries. All right, the meeting minutes are accepted, as you wrote. Thank you, Tamika. Next up on the agenda is a continuation of the public hearing on the application for variance and application for site special permit for Blue Sky cell tower at 12 Phillips Road in Rutland, Mass. This is a continuation about three weeks ago, two, three weeks ago. We had a last meeting, just to bring up the speed real quick. Attorney Sousa, who's on Zoom this evening.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Good evening.
Good evening. He brought in some consultants, went over the RF antenna locations, went over noise, and went over the radio frequencies, you know, how they emulate from the tower. He had three consultants for that. Tonight, he's gonna have a little bit more, a little bit more pig work. He sent in the balloon test in December, I believe it was December, with no leaves on the trees, was done. That's been uploaded, that's on the public website, correct? He's gonna do a slideshow of that, so we'll see that this evening. But before we get into things, I just want to, kind of retrospectively, looking back at the last meeting, it was a very long meeting, and quite frankly, I don't think it was a very productive meeting. So, I wanna be very specific tonight, that we're gonna talk about 12 Phillips Road in Rutland, Mass. Okay? And I, as the chair of the zoning board, I'm gonna be very quick to stop anybody, and that's Attorney Sousa and your people, that's the public. I don't wanna talk about what's going on in New Hampshire. And to you Attorney Sousa, if you do have an expert coming, I wanna, I wanna hear data and facts relative to 12 Phillips Road in Rutland, Mass. I don't care about what they've done and how often they've done it, and what we generally do. You know, speaking just particularly about the noise, okay? I deal with generators. I sell generators. I install millions of dollars worth of generators. I know some of the information. I ask questions sometimes, because I already know the answer. And I can tell you right now, it was very general, basic information I got from that, from that person. I was not very impressed with it, okay? And, you know, I just want specifics. I don't want possibilities, okay? I want specifics. And that's the stuff this board needs to make the decisions, based off of real data, not presumptions and not what they usually do, okay? So that's what we're gonna focus on tonight, okay? But I'm just letting everybody know, we wanna be specific about this tower and this location, and how it's relevant to the town of Rutland. First things first here, Rick and I have been working on getting a consultant for, for this project for the town, okay? The consultant, basically the way our bylaws read is that the applicant would pay for the consultant, okay? And then he represents the town, and he helps us go through things. Now, Rick, you had a gentleman that you were talking to a few weeks back, correct?
Right.
Prior to the last meeting, he was engaging with somebody, but, not to cut, you weren't too impressed with him, correct? He really didn't, he wasn't an RF engineer?
He was, he wanted to focus in on, on the health hazards of RF radiation, and that's not really what the town, I thought, needed. So, I don't, I don't think this particular engineer is our guy.
And he was a lawyer, he wasn't even an RF engineer. And I gotta be honest with you, Rick and I, for a while, have been trying to find somebody, and it's not the easiest thing to do. Not a lot of RF engineers out there. But, we did receive an email from Mr. Gold, a very concerned town resident here, and he suggested somebody. And I actually spoke to that gentleman, his name is David Maxson. Maxson? And he is, in meeting with him, guys, he's, he's worked for approximately 150 towns just in Massachusetts alone. He's worked in other New England states as well. And he represents, his job is to represent municipalities. He's not someone that generally works for like a Blue Sky Tower or an AT&amp;T, although he has in the past, but he's more of an outside consultant. He's worked for people in Princeton, I've reached out to Princeton, tried to get a, a reference, if you will, guys, on him there. I have not received any feedback yet, okay? Because it's, honestly, I don't know who we dealt with there. I didn't ask him for references, I'm just kinda calling people that I know in different towns, trying to find out who might have dealt with him, how he did his job, and how well he represented their respective towns, and what we can expect from him. So, in general, in talking with him, his mantra, guys, okay, Rick and Jake and Paul, he wants to work with us as a board, this board, this zoning board, to make sure the bylaws are being met, okay? Work us through the whole, our specific town bylaws, and what requirements the attorney representing Blue Skies has to meet, and all those things. The issues with the variances that he's requested, he'll work us through those things. He'll work us through, he's got a lot of knowledge, first of all, he is an RF engineer, he's got a lot of knowledge in radio frequencies, he's got a lot of knowledge in just how you take a balloon test, you know? Just for an example, he gave me, for instance, of what type of camera lens you can use to make the balloon look bigger or smaller sometimes, okay? You know, not to say anything is done maliciously by any applicant, but, you know, perception is in the eye of the beholders. So, but it's good having someone who knows some of the way these things are done, who has a lot of experience. So, you know, he'll also, Rick, he also helps us write decisions. Whether we're for it or against it, whatever the decision comes down as, whether it's an order of conditions that's, you know, gonna be accompanied with the acceptance of the cell tower, he'll help make sure we, you know, we write that correctly. Or if it's a denial, he'll help us install the proper language, you know, to do it the right legal ways there, you know, there as well. So, didn't know what your thoughts were. I was pretty impressed, I spent about 25 minutes on the phone with him. And I felt he, you know, as someone myself, I'm an electrical contractor, okay? My company put in the 4G network at Gillette Stadium back in 2012. Now, I am no way an RF expert, but I do know somewhat how to connect these things up, I know a little bit about it. And I, and he was very, everything, he was spot on with everything and then some. I learned a lot from him. He seems like a very fearing and impartial person, so. I don't know what your thoughts are as a board, what you think about talking to Attorney Sousa about, you know, acquiring this.
I would just like to, what is, I see his resident, but what's his background or his training? It just says all the stuff that he's done, I don't see, I see his affiliations, but I don't see his, is he an engineer?
He is, he's an RF engineer. I don't know where he went to school. I didn't see his degree. No, I'm being serious.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, I get that, that's what I'm just interested.
I could, you know, ask him more things too.
Yeah, just what is his credentials? I'd like to know what his credentials are. As far as, I mean, he's written a bunch of stuff here, which is impressive. But I'd like to, I'd just like to know what his background, educational background is on.
Sounds like a good idea to me, if he was that, if you're that impressed with him and he's been doing a lot of top some.
Yeah, if it helps me. Mr. Chairman, if it helps.
One quick second, Attorney Sousa. Rick, do you have any comments? Are you fine with us going forward?
Yeah, I am, Chris, it sounds good to me.
All right. Attorney Sousa, would you be open to us, or what's your opinion on David Maxson and us hiring him?
Yeah, so I won't share my opinion on Mr. Maxson, but I will share that I've been involved in easily 35 applications with Mr. Maxson on the other side. He represents a number of municipalities that we've been involved in, not just for Blue Sky Towers, but for my other wireless clients.
Yep.
And so, I wouldn't necessarily have an objection to Mr. Maxson.
Okay, that's fair enough.
I think he would help, he would help affirm the significant gap that we have here, and the efforts that we've made to try to fill that gap.
Yeah, and he understands the data, you know, he knows how to look at this data and actually, you know, if it's legit, if what they're putting forward, you know, do the calculations, and he can look at it. He, one other thing to note, everyone, that in speaking with him from a timeframe perspective, he could potentially have us a report by possibly as early as June 8th, which might potentially be the first time we could meet. That's three weeks from today. It's tight, but it's something that he might be able to pull off. He did say, we have one of those accounts, right? The planning board, I know, has that account where you put the money in and they.
Yeah, 53G account.
Thank you very much, Attorney.
Yes, we don't have it yet, so the funds would just have to come from our FY22 budget at this point.
Okay.
Yeah, still with the attorney, it got approved at the time being, but it's still with the attorney general.
Okay, all right. So, we would just, and basically, Attorney Sousa, he's, he would like a $3,500 retainer from Blue Sky to get started on things. If, that would include a couple of meetings, potentially coming to a couple of meetings, providing the report, reviewing all the data that he's, that Attorney Sousa has given us as well with the other data that we might see tonight. We can get that all to this gentleman, and again, he could have that report, hopefully within three weeks. And for, for at least, that's the next, earliest time this board could meet, at least myself personally, okay? So I based it upon that, knowing that would be the quickest we could turn it around, all right?
Pretty fast, it's great.
Yeah, it's pretty fast, it seems like he's pretty, pretty available. Attorney Sousa, is that something, that $3,500, is that acceptable?
Yeah, I have to get the Blue Sky Towers to approve it, but I don't anticipate an issue.
Okay, all right.
A reasonable amount.
All right. So Tamika, do we have to vote on this?
I don't.
Okay, all right, so the board. Okay. For the sake of time, one quick second, for the sake of time, I can't imagine anybody in the audience would object to us hiring a consultant. Is that correct? All right? If anybody would like to object to that, raise your hand, but if not, let's just, for the sake of time, we'll keep this thing moving along. All right, thank you. So, with that being said, Jacob, we have a motion to?
I'll make a motion to move forward on retaining Mr. Maxson as a consultant.
All right, I'll just amend that at the expense of Blue Sky.
The petitioner, correct.
Yeah, yep, okay. At the expense of the petitioner.
Second.
All right, Paul has seconded it. All right, any discussion? Okay, not hearing any, um, let's have a roll call vote. For all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All, any nays? All right, motion carries? So, and I will reach out to him, and Tamika, I'll talk to you about forwarding all the information that you have, that we've gotten from everybody, the town, Attorney Sousa, and getting all that documentation to this gentleman. But I'll first ask him a few of your questions, Paul, and get that data for us as well, all right? Okay, so at this time, Attorney Sousa, I'd like to just turn it over to you for any new information. I know you've submitted some, uploaded some new documentation, and do you wanna walk us through it and give us a little slideshow, please?
That'd be great. So, once again, by way of record, Ricardo Sousa from Prince Louboutin here on behalf of the applicant, Blue Sky Towers 3. And also joined tonight by Martin Lavine from C Squared Systems. He's the RF engineer who's been responsible for working through AT&amp;T's radio frequency plots, coverage needs. And I'm also joined by Don Hayes as well, who joined us at the last meeting, who can talk about EME and RF compliance. And Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure who that is, but when we last left three weeks ago at the last hearing, the board requested that we do two things. First of which is to provide additional plots at lower heights, to see what the propagation, the radio frequency propagation is.
Yep.
From the proposed sites, site at lower heights. And so, Mr. Lavine has prepared those, we submitted them to the board, and he can start talking about them as well.
Terrific.
Together, yeah, together with what impact does that do on AT&amp;T's network as far as who they're trying to cover, how many miles of road are we trying to cover as well, until he'll provide, he'll make a presentation regarding that impact at the lower heights. Secondly, we've also superimposed the tower utilizing the December photo simulations at also lower heights. And those lower heights are the proposed height at 140, and then we also show you what it looks like at 130, 120, and 110, utilizing a few of the views where you can see it, because many of our views in the photo simulations, you simply can't see the tower through the wooded area. And so we can present on that as well. And so, I'd like Mr. Lavine to be able to share his screen if that's possible. And I would say that there are two somewhat competing goals. The first of which is to make sure that AT&amp;T can fill its gap in coverage, but it's also to build a structure that's gonna allow up to three more carriers to also fill their gaps in coverage. We have a letter of interest from Dish Networks, but we fully anticipate that the other two carriers, the major carriers in this market, will also wanna utilize this site. They're just not part of this application from a timing perspective. And so, Martin, if you could.
Attorney, if I may just stop you for one second, okay?
Of course.
Hold that note. Tamika, is there any way of turning up this volume in here?
They would have to do that back there, but they just heard you say that.
Okay. Wow, that's great. I wish, I wish a lot of people in life liked that. Just think it and they know it, right? It's great.
Yeah, and I have my volume at the highest it can go. I apologize.
All right.
So, Tamika, could you allow Martin?
Everybody here is pretty good now, good. Yeah, that's good, Attorney.
Okay, oh, good. Better?
Yep.
Right.
Good, yeah, go ahead.
Tamika, could you allow Martin to join and to also share his screen for the radio frequency plots?
Yeah, he should be able to.
Okay, that'd be great. So Martin, if you could come off of you.
Attorney, one other thing too, just, just while I hold you up, once they're done with the information, I do wanna let the town, I mean, that's gonna be pretty much all their information, at that time, I'm gonna open up to the public for you, for you all to make a comment about this tower to this board, okay? At that time, because that's when you'll have heard all the information, all right, from, from the applicant. So just, I know that's been a bone of contention as well, the guy, the consultant in speaking your piece, but we'll give you that after his, let's just listen to this data and information, and we'll go from there. Thank you, Attorney.
Understood, thank you. Okay, Martin, floor is yours.
Okay, Martin Lavine on C Squared Systems on behalf of AT&amp;T. In terms of other heights, there are basically two plots showing our height analysis, they are layered with the coverage at different heights at the two different thresholds we discussed, neg 83, which is our desired coverage, our best coverage, and at neg 93, which is our minimum adequate coverage. The plot's up on screen now, is the high quality coverage, red, shows how much we cover if we're in compliance with the ordinance, with the overall tower, 75 feet, about ground level, antennas at four feet below that for eight panels would be 71 feet above ground level. So as you go down that list of heights, you'll see light blue, yellow, dark blue, and green layered in that order on the plot, the highest ones are at the back to show the incremental coverage at different heights. For this instance, we can see a huge difference between the 75 feet and 110 feet, it was requested, and incremental coverage also above that. We have stats, statistics also to show the change in coverage. You can see that's just covers, the village there gets its roof, there's not a huge area of coverage there, but this plot is zoomed out, I said, it's about 10 miles across the whole plot, so this is actually a pretty, pretty good area. And you can see, even we go up to green, there's areas that pick up coverage, yellow and blue, these patches here are blue in the more populated areas that are picked up only in 126 feet. More effect, still haven't seen, at neg 93, this is the minimum adequate coverage, and we can see here, there's a huge difference between 71 and 106, 75 and 110 foot towers. And also, as we go higher, we pick up more coverage. This is just for us, again, if we were at 136 feet, then the, if we had three co-locators, they'd be at 126, 116, and 106, so we're trying to preserve as much coverage as we can for them as we determine the height here. Also have.
So Martin, before you go into that.
Yes.
Into the statistics, could you talk a little bit about the difference between neg 93, or negative 93 at the top of these plots?
Thank you, yeah. What is the difference in the 83 to 93 dBm?
Right.
It's the two different coverage levels we discuss are neg 83, which is the highest quality coverage, and neg 93 is the minimum adequate. Below neg 93, we consider it to be unreliable coverage.
So in other words, there's a correlation to the quality of data and the quantity of data? It's somewhat an inverse equation, is that what you're saying?
Actually, they go together, even though it seems backwards, because these are negative numbers. Negative 83 dBm is a much stronger signal than negative 93. So the smaller coverage footprint is, you know, we get, we pay for here, it's, the highest coverage is provided to a much smaller area, and the minimum adequate is provided to a much greater area.
Okay, and Martin, AT&amp;T owns licenses at various spectrums, right?
That's correct.
You're plotting at the 700 megahertz?
Yes, that is our, our maximum footprint.
Okay.
The others, the others all cover a subset of what 700 can reach.
Okay, so let's break that down. So, the AT&amp;T installation at this tower is gonna include antennas, and each of those antennas are gonna be able to propagate at 700 megahertz, but they also can operate at the mid-band, right? Which is what?
850, 1900, 2100, and 2300 in the case of AT&amp;T.
Okay, and as you go up to 2100 or 2300, that signal simply just doesn't travel as far, right?
Yes.
Geographically.
It's, it's primary purposes to get as much coverage as it can, and get those users onto those higher frequency systems and off the 700. When they come, when those users come off the 700, the noise at 700 drops, and 700 reaches its maximum coverage, because it's handling as few users as possible, and putting everyone it can on those other frequencies.
Okay, and that's why you prepared these plots at 700, because this is the best we're gonna get, that AT&amp;T is gonna get from a propagation standpoint at this site. Is that correct?
Yeah, yes, all the other frequencies will cover a subset of what 700 covers.
Paul has a question.
I'm looking at these coverage maps you're putting up here, and what I'm, and correct me if I'm wrong, if I'm interpreting this wrong, I'm not seeing a huge difference over the 116 foot tower. And the one question I have, it looks like on the map you have right now, how is it that, if it's an overlay, the 75 foot tower seems to have good coverage outside of the 116 tower?
That's because they are layered. Anywhere you see the red for 75, the other four layers are underneath there.
Oh, they're under it?
Yes. They are stacked in the order that they're shown in the legend from top to bottom.
That's.
So where, where each height peaks out is where you see the color, where you see light blue, yellow, blue or green is an area that is covered at that height, but not at the lower height, whatever the next lower height is. Light blue is areas that are covered at 106, but not at 71. Anything that's covered at 71 is covered at 106.
Okay.
Just a way to show.
So, I'm sorry, so when I'm looking at this, I'm seeing 106 coverage mostly there, I see a little bit of the, what is it, the 116 with the yellow, but not a whole lot. It looks like your 106 is providing, your 106 foot tower is providing pretty good coverage from most of the area.
Yeah, it, in the plots, it always, it doesn't tell the whole story, that's why we do the statistics and the percentages to show how much we lose. And if you lose, you know, if there's a, if the perimeter of this is, you know, five or 10 miles around the edge of this, and we lose, you know, a quarter mile or less of coverage all the way around, which doesn't look like much, but of course, over the 10-mile perimeter of the coverage footprint, it does add up, actually. We're looking at 7%, 10%, 12% losses between heights. It does not look that way in the plot, but when you add up all the areas that we lose, that's what the coverage difference comes to, per about, per 10 feet of height.
And just to echo what I said earlier, you're also trying to solve the problem not only for AT&amp;T, but also for three other carriers, and so, if you push yourself too far down, then you're gonna get into a situation with lower carriers, the carriers at the lower heights, because they have to have 10 feet of vertical separation, now have inferior coverage. And so that's the push and play. You know, we think there might be some room to push the tower down about 10 feet, but we wanna be able to accommodate the future carriers as well, Dish, T-Mobile, and Verizon. That's an important factor, not only for us, but also for the town. You want one structure that can accommodate everybody.
Yeah, and for instance, in going from 116 to 106, we lose anywhere from 9 to 14% of our coverage, depending on which category of population, business or road coverage you're looking at, so. And there are similar losses every 10 feet from 136 down to there, so.
And, and those are the slides that you have next. Before you go to that, just talk briefly about the coverage objective itself. It's not really just, you know, some of this open space, it's clearly the residential areas that are outside of center of town, but also the major arteries as well?
Yes.
Excuse me, I just got one question too, gentlemen, if I may. Now, on, on the map, that's minus 93 dB, now dBm, what, is that the lowest you can go? I mean, because, I mean, this map's not covering a lot of area, you know, you're, even at the minus 93, it seems like a whole lot of work for not a whole lot of, you know, coverage. I mean, you got all that white area of Rutland, it's just, it's all white.
Yeah, it, it's a challenge, it's a big challenge, but if you compare it to the plots that we submitted for the church, the existing site, it's substantially a huge improvement. You're covering a significant more population and more major arteries. There's a challenge just to the north of the star, from a topography standpoint, because it just dips down so much, there's very little we can do to cover that alley, except maybe, or, or that valley, I should say, except put a site right down there. So that's not something we can achieve from this proposed location.
So, yeah, okay, and, but does the coverage get better in these white areas on this, on these maps? Or is there just no coverage from this antenna in these maps, on the white area?
This is only showing the coverage in isolation of the proposed site, we can look.
Yeah, if you look at the other sites that are surrounding it, as Martin just showed, there's coverage coming from other sites. What we try to do is isolate the coverage difference for heights from this proposed site. Yeah, so there is, it's not as if.
So this is the existing right now, you're saying, what you have on the screen right now?
Yes, this is what we talked about the last hearing. Yep.
Okay. All right, all right, well that makes a little more sense, because I'm like, boy, it's a whole lot of work for not much, okay?
Yeah.
All right, continue, please.
It's about incremental building, trying to fill these gaps in coverage that still exists, you know? Looking at what we have from surrounding sites, other towers, and we kinda walked through those at the last hearing, and then trying to figure out how we can solve this coverage gap here, that you see right in front of you now. So Martin, maybe if you could turn on, or turn up the spreadsheets that talk about the losses that you get as a result of lower heights.
Page a little better, there we go.
Yeah, and members of the board, you have this as part of your package as well.
Yep. So we're zoomed out to show, in this case, we wanted to show the first tier of So we're, we're zoomed out to show, in this case, we wanted to show the, the first tier of surrounding sites, which kind of makes our incremental coverage from the proposed site seem a little smaller than usual. Uh, but we're, at neg ninety-three, we're picking up two square miles of, um, new coverage areas that don't have that coverage yet, and a square mile of the neg eighty-three, um, best coverage. If we look, um, you can see this, these stats here are what we'd lose going from the requested height down to the ordinance height. You can see we lose anywhere from sixty-nine to eighty-four percent of the coverage if we, if we go all the way down there. So it's, it's a complete non-starter, um, at that height. Um, but if you look, even from one oh-six to seventy-one, go down there, we lose anywhere from sixty-two to seventy-six percent of our coverage by category. So that is a, a big loss there. We'd like to keep everyone, if we could add or above one hundred and six, I, I can't speak precisely about the network needs of the other providers, but, um, uh, there's a very likelihood that they would be losing roughly the same amount of coverage we would, um, going below those heights. Um, see, just going up from one oh-six to one sixteen, we pick up, um, another, you know, fourteen, nine to fourteen percent of coverage, uh, a quarter of a square mile, um, almost a mile of roads.
Gentlemen, uh, one question, one question. Um, is it safe, you were talking about the losses for other carriers, you know, i.e. like a Verizon, if they were to jump on your tower. Um, the Dish Network, now, is that a different, do they operate a different signal? Or is that, is that all the same signal?
Uh, it's generally the same, generally the same frequencies, um.
The requirement's the same generally or specifically or?
Uh, the regulation, the FCC regulations are the same for them. They're using the same, um, uh, frequencies that the other, uh, commercial carriers, Verizon, AT&amp;T, and T-Mobile use in, in general. Um, there may be some differences, but in terms of getting a footprint, they're in that seven hundred, uh, six hundred range, um, and likely their, um, coverage that they would achieve from here would be quite similar at the same height.
Thank you.
We can see here, um, if we go another ten feet up, we gain another, you know, uh, three percent of main roads, but fifteen percent of population coverage. Um, if we go another ten feet up to the requested height, um, strangely enough, we don't pick up any population in my analysis, but we're picking up seven to ten percent of coverage area and, um, and roads there. This is all based on, um, the two thousand and ten census data, uh, so there's, must be, or our, our coverage was in that particular case was an area without, the delta between one thirty-six and one twenty-six at neg ninety-three must have gone through an area that didn't have much by way of population in the census.
All right. Okay, makes sense, you know? Yeah, I mean, it, it, this all seems to make sense. I mean, again, proving the calculations is something that I'm not qualified, and this is just one more thing I think the consultant can help us out with in determining their, his and our, his mathematics is, you know, on par with.
Right.
And, and this, this is all, I mean, that's not necessarily how AT, not necessarily everything that goes into AT&amp;T's decision, but this is a analysis that, um, is all based on publicly available information to compare one height to another or one site to another, um, that anyone can, if they want to put the effort in, duplicate it and see what they come up with based on the same data.
Okay. All right, terrific, thank you. Any, uh, anybody on the board here have any questions specific to this, what they've submitted so far?
Yeah, uh, Mark, let me ask you about the software you're running to, you're, you're running to generate this stuff.
Yes.
I think I may have asked it before, I wasn't sure, but is this proprietary software to C squared? Or is this, um, software package that's purchased on the market and then used by your company to, uh, generate its reports?
Uh, we, we pay for it. It's, um, it's called Decimal Planner. Uh, the model it uses is called Predict 2.0. Um, that's proprietary to the, um, Canadian Research, um, Commission, I believe it is, CRC. Uh, uses terrain and, um, land use data to refine the, uh, propagation predictions. We've done many hundreds of these across New England, and our models are very well-developed and very accurate.
So the model is not, was not built by your company, it's used by, it was built by a private or a different company and, um, you guys purchased it from them?
Yes, and we.
Modern software, I should say.
And we adjust the parameters of the model. It's, you, you buy the basic model, uh, and we adjust the parameters based on the drive test data we've collected over the years, um, to optimize it for New England. So, um, and straight out of the box, it would work nearly as well as we have it working.
Okay, great, thank you for that information.
And Martin, it's fair to say that, um, David Maxson at Isotrop is also very familiar with your model and has reviewed your plots and/or your presentations on other applications, uh, many times?
Um, many would be a mild way of putting it, yes.
Yeah, exactly.
He, he did mention, um, yes, he did mention that C, uh, C two squared there, whatever.
C squared.
C squared, yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
Yep. Spoke relatively, you know, I mean, he was not very biased in any direction, but he, he, you know, spoke very, you know, said they were a pretty professional company, he didn't have anything to say, so. Uh, Rick, uh, do you have any questions or anything so far?
No, no.
Okay.
Everything sounds fine, Chris.
All right, terrific. All right, Attorney, what, what do you have next for us?
Um, so the other, uh, piece of information that we have is the, um, the actual photo sims that we submitted. Let me see if I can get those up on the screen. Yep. Yeah, here, can you see them?
Uh, no.
No, okay. One second. Okay, how about now?
Yep.
Okay, great. So these are the same photo simulations that we, um, submitted to the board, uh, from the last hearing prior to this hearing. As you may recall, we did photo simulations based upon a balloon test back in, um, August twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-one. However, that was, you know, with leaves on the trees, and so the board asked us to do yet another photo simulation, um, and balloon test on December eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. And so we use this as a baseline that was submitted to the board as well. And then pursuant to the request at the last hearing, we've superimposed a tower at these various heights in the views that you can see. So, um, I can walk you through that. These are the various locations that we, um, took photos from, and the yellow ones are where you potentially could see the tower and where you'll see the superposition of the different heights. So let me know if you can't see it that well, but this is on Phillips Road, sorry. So as you can see, that's the balloon itself. And. And then this is at a superimposed tower at a hundred and forty feet. You can see it in the trees.
Okay.
And then dropping down to one thirty, dropping down to one twenty, and then dropping down to one ten.
All right.
Okay. Then we took it from another vantage point here. This is behind the site, Main Street, um, and you can see the ta- the balloon just above that tree right there, that pine tree. Yep. And then we've superimposed the tower at one hundred and forty feet. You can just barely see the top of the tower. And then as soon as you start dropping anywhere below one forty, there's one thirty. You really can't see the radome anymore for, for the tower. And then, once again, at one, this is another view, sorry, because below.
Yeah, below that is no sensitive.
Yeah. Exactly.
Understood.
Mr. Chairman, could I just ask a question on that picture?
Uh, yep.
If, if the photographer had moved, whatever, ten, twenty feet either side of the tallest tree in the picture.
Yeah, understood, that, that was, that was centered up very, framed very nicely, it's right in the center of that tree. Yeah. Again, there's some framing that goes on in this. That's something the consultant discussed.
Gotcha.
That he would highlight and point out. Um, you know, Mr. Gold, um, took some photos and submitted to the board of a, of a different location. So again, it's where you hi- where and how you frame it.
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Gold.
I mean, honestly, yeah, VSS is also.
One, one second, Attorney.
It seems to me that, um, the first photo is actually of the, um, along the school roadway, which is where two is. Two is by the, uh, by the middle school, um, at the far end of the middle school. And then one, to, at least from the map, it looks like it's on the same road as two, which is the, um.
The access road?
Yeah, the access road.
Yeah, it does all fit Phillips Road.
Is that, yeah, so.
So that's not Phillips Road.
There's a question, is, is the, your photo one, is that Phillips Road or the access road between the two schools, Attorney?
Yeah, so here's, here's the screenshot as to where the photos were taken.
Yep.
Taken. Here's number one.
Okay, so.
Yep.
So that is the access road, yeah?
Yep, here's the, uh.
Okay.
Other school, the middle school, number two, and then three is here.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Thank you for pointing that out.
So my photos were, I took five photos in between those two spots.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead, continue, please.
So this is where I left off. Um, here's the next vantage point at Forest Hill Drive. You can see the, the balloon in the middle of the trees there. Um, and then, apologize, there's one forty, really hidden in the trees. It's sort of right there. Can you see it? Just barely.
Yeah.
And then one thirty, can also see it just barely, just because of the vertical elements of the pine trees themselves. And then one twenty, really buried in the trees there. And then one ten, also really buried in the trees as well.
All right.
And then the next vantage point here is at Meadowbrook Circle, and I believe this is not visible. So the next photos are just from vantage points where they're, the tower is simply not visible. And I can walk through those real quick. Meadowbrook Circle, um, here's Meadowbrook Circle as well. Here's, you can see it here in this vantage point. This is Maple Ave, just in the trees there above the deck. And so we've superimposed the tower there at one forty.
That's at one forty, okay, yeah.
At one forty, yeah. And then one thirty drops a little bit, but still pretty buried in the trees even in the winter. And then not visible at one twenty.
Yeah, okay.
And, uh, here's another, not visible from Fairview Ave. And actually, I apologize, this one, you can see it just in the distance there. Can you see the red balloon there?
Yeah, yeah, oh, yeah.
Yes.
Between those.
Yep, and then we've superimposed the tower at one forty there.
Yeah.
And then not visible at one thirty.
Okay, all right.
So you do get some benefit again, once again, from the one thirty drop, from one forty to one thirty. Um, here you can see it in the distance. This is at Maple Ave as well. And we've superimposed the tower there at one forty. You can see it in the distance. And then at one thirty, just barely see it. And then not visible at one twenty, really, and disappears.
Okay.
And then not visible from this location at Ma- on Main Street or off of Main Street. It's not visible from this location. Apologize, I don't have an address for this site, but I could take you back to the map.
Photo number ten down here.
Yep. And here's, um, also not visible from Maple Ave here at this intersection.
Right across the walls, yeah.
Yeah.
Canwood Drive, also not visible, photo number twelve. And not visible from this location on Main Street. Not visible from this location, also on Maple Ave, photo number fourteen.
That's by the Heights, right?
Yep, Heights.
Susie Drive, also not visible.
All right, just hold on one second. So one of the concerns was that, up at the Heights with the, um, uh, the development that was going in up there. That's, that's, looks like it's photo number ten, if I'm correct.
Photo number ten, yeah?
Yeah, it looks like there was no, no visibility on that. That's one of, somebody's concerned out here.
All right. Do you want me to show you where ten is?
Yeah, we see it on, yeah, that's.
That's up on Heights property, that is a proposed fifty-five and over there, yeah.
I see.
Okay.
Okay.
But that was not visible, you said, is that correct?
That's right, yep. There's ten, not visible. Yep. I think we're on fourteen. Fourteen also not visible in this location. Um, fifteen, not visible, Susie Drive. Uh, Main Street, also not visible. Main Street again, not visible. Laurel Wood Road, um, not visible. MacGusset Road, not visible. Canwood Drive. Maple Ave. Not visible. Rod Road, Main Street, not visible. Another Canwood Drive, not visible. Main Street. Canwood Drive, looks like a new development. Juniper Lane, not visible. Canwood Drive again, not visible. And then Pleasant Dale Road, also not visible. And here's Main Street, not visible, photo twenty-nine. Um, Miles Road, not visible. And Maple Ave, photo number thirty-one, not visible. And then Canwood Drive, photo thirty-two, not visible. And Pleasant Dale Road, same.
Yeah.
And then the last one, Walnut Street. On, oh, sorry, second to last one, thirty-four, not visible. And thirty-five, Glenwood Road, not visible. So I, I hope that does help, you know, sort of anticipate the impact and especially what the heights do at the few locations where you, you will be able to see it. I think these photo sims help, um, help provide the contrast.
Yes, thank you, yep, they were, it's helpful to see some of the issues there with the heights and, with the different heights. It's nice to see just how, uh, in the areas that there was the tower, just to see the differences.
Right.
Thank you.
Of course.
Uh, is there anything else, Attorney, that you have for us this evening?
No, that's all I have, uh, Mr. Chairman. I, you know, we weren't sure if the board was going to hire consultants. Um, now that the board's made that decision, we'll work with Mr. Maxson to provide him with the necessary information that he may need to review the application.
Okay.
His, his job is really to confirm we have a gap in coverage and to confirm that this proposed site will fill that gap in coverage, not only for AT&amp;T. His, his job is really to confirm we have a gap in coverage and to confirm that this proposed site will fill that gap in coverage, not only for AT&amp;T but for the other carriers. And that we've also done an alternative site analysis as well, which we, we have and we walked through last week. So we'll work, uh, not with him, but we will be happy to be responsive to him on, you know, questions that he may have regarding the application materials.
Sure. Yeah, no, I'm sure, uh, professionalism will be there and everybody can play fair in the sandbox, I'm sure that won't be an issue. You've worked with him before. Um, does the board have any questions or any comments regarding what the attorney suggested post?
I don't.
Uh, Paul?
I don't.
Okay, yeah, I have some questions for Dawn, Dawn Hayes, is it?
Yes, Dawn is here.
Okay. Dawn, on your, when you're putting together your reports on the RF radiation, are you working off strictly algorithms, readily, readily acceptable, accepted equations? Or is there, is this monitorable by something else other than a mathematic, mathematical model?
Uh, so to answer the question, basically, yes, I use the modeling that is suggested by the FCC with a couple of changes. One is that I don't, um, use a reduced ground reflection factor like they suggest that you might be able to use. So in other words, they say that the reflected wave could increase the values by a factor of 2.56, where I use a factor of four. Uh, that is about the only way that we differ.
Now, once this thing is up and running, is, is RF radiation measurable, um, sure, people, like with a Geiger counter or something like that? Or is it all mathematically modeled?
Uh, no, you, you can measure RF fields, absolutely. Uh, however, with these types of installations where you are, you know, more than a hundred feet away, no matter where you are, uh, you would need a very sophisticated type of instrument in order to get accurate readings of, uh, the individual contributors because the fields are so low.
Even at that thousand-foot distance we talked about being the pop, strongest signal closest to the ground, you'd still need something?
Yes, it, it's, it's still very low, yes. Uh, so one of the things that, that I would just point out, when, when a provider talks about, um, 93 dBm, what that means is 10 to the minus 9.3 milliwatts of power. And so gives you some perspective on how low the signals actually are.
Thank you.
Rick, you got anything for them?
Uh, no, no, Chris, uh, no, I'm all set, thank you.
Okay, Attorney, one question I got for you. Um, what's the feasibility and, and have you and your team looked at, uh, a, you know, two separate towers or multiple towers in town to, to do this kind of coverage? And is that, does that give you better coverage if you have looked at it? Um, is that something that's a, that's something that you guys, that might be feasible here?
No, I, I don't believe it is, that's not something we've looked at. We really are, um, trying to find a solution that's one, one tower solution to be able to accommodate not only AT&amp;T but Dish and the other two carriers. We think that's much more efficient than building multiple towers. As you can see, there's a lot, there's a lot of resistance to one tower. Can you imagine two?
It's a good point.
Good point.
But it would be much lower.
It would be lower, yeah.
They, they could afford to be much lower, you know, in size and, you know?
Yeah.
Yep, okay, and I just didn't know if you had done, had any data on that at this time. Um, so, that's all.
Yeah.
Alright, so if there's no other questions for the board, at this time, I'd like to open it up to the public. You guys have any questions for them, just, you know, just through the chair, okay? Let's keep it, uh, meeting's gone very professional and very polite tonight, so let's keep this rolling. Uh, we're on a groove here, alright? So, um, at this time, does anybody, um, have a question? Mike, you, you, you had a question at last week's meeting, so I'll, I'll start off with you.
Thank you, Mr. Jim. I'm sorry?
Go ahead, what was it?
Mike Sullivan, live in town. So I have a couple of thoughts and a, and a couple of concerns. As some of you may know, I served on our planning board for, I think, 10 years as chairman, um, many of those years. And during that time, um, we actually wrote this cell tower bylaw. And the reason it was written was because a 600-plus foot tower was built in our town and the townspeople were not happy with that. So, you know, they came to us and said, hey, how do we, how do we manage this, how do we, you know, prevent this from happening again? So we took that task on and I think most of you probably know what the process is to get a zoning change. But public hearings, bring it to a town meeting, takes a two-thirds majority vote, which is, you know, significant and difficult. And I'll point out to you that at the town meeting that this, um, regulation was, um, voted on, there was well in excess of 200 people at the meeting. And I'm sure they weren't all there for the, for the cell tower, I don't want to misrepresent that, there was probably, you know, something else, but that's besides the point. Everybody here knows that typically our town meetings are, you know, 50, 60 people. So it was one of the largest town meetings that I've ever been to in my, whatever, I need to admit, 40 years of coming to town meetings. And not only did it get passed, it passed unanimously. So I think that's a, you know, that's a loud and clear cry from the townspeople of how strongly they supported the bylaw as written. And in particular, um, the height requirement that is part of that. So, um, one of the things that I don't quite understand, and I guess I, I won't ask for an explanation, but when I think about a variance in all my ignorance, a variance to me is, um, you know, typically someone wants to put up a garage in their lot line, has a taper to it and they end up, you know, two feet closer to their neighbor and the neighbor, uh, you know, so they apply for variance, the neighbor doesn't complain, probably folks grant the variance. I don't see a variance as taking, um, a, a subdivision regulation that was adopted by over 200 people at a town meeting and ignoring the height requirement and allowing it to be built more than twice what the allowable limit should be. So from that standpoint, um, I, I understand, you know, the applicant, or the attorney or one of the gentlemen said that they want to build one structure, um, to, to satisfy the requirement. Well, I, I obviously understand why they want to do that because it's more cost-effective. But I don't care personally, as a taxpayer, whether it's cost-effective to them or not. I don't understand why, if we have adopted this regulation so, so overwhelmingly, that the, um, the ZBA would look at it and say, okay, look, uh, you know, our regulation is what it is. Show the tower at the height it is, and if you need another tower to get coverage, build another tower. And if you need another tower to get additional, uh, coverage, build another tower. Um, and if those, you know, get adopted and accepted, so be it. But to just throw out a regulation that was so overwhelmingly supported, and I'm not, I'm not, don't get me wrong, I'm, I'm not suggesting you, that's what your intention is, but that's what the request is. And I think that's wrong. I, I, I would encourage, you know, the, I don't, please, I mean no disrespect. Your responsibility is to the townspeople, to the taxpayers, to, um, not to the applicant or not to the, and I, again, I mean no disrespect, um, to the landowner. I don't even know who it is, I know the name, but I don't know the pe, the person, it could be here for all I know. So I mean no disrespect to them either. But I don't care that they, they have a financial gain, that they're going to gain at the expense of the townspeople. And that to me is wrong. Uh, so I would encourage you to, to look at, look at those, uh, aspects of, um, the zoning and consider that in your, uh, evaluation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris, I guess, as it, um, just for the purpose of procedural here, that right now we just take questions regarding the thing and then, then open it to more comment.
Well, no, I've, I've opened this up for comment.
Okay, so you...
At this point, the attorney's, the applicant has put forth all the information.
Right.
So if they have any questions or if they have comments, we held off comments in the last meeting.
I know, I'm not saying not to, I understand.
And I want to hear, I think, I think the board needs to hear the comments of the townspeople at this time with no other questions for the attorney.
Alright, well, that's why I was saying if they had questions for it, to clear those first. And then that's it here and take the comment.
Just allow everybody to speak one at a time, maybe we don't think too far.
Thank you, Mr. Jim.
Thank you, yep.
Karen Greenwood, 7 Breezy Lane. I do have a question, and I might have missed this, I haven't been at every meeting for every minute. When you're talking about covering the gap, and you saw the white area, and how this is going to cover the gap.
Yep.
AT&amp;T customers, correct? Did they complain and how many people are we talking about that are in this gap that this tower is supposed to take care of? Does that make sense, the question?
It's a pretty straightforward question, I guess. Attorney Susan, did you hear that? Is that something you could respond to?
Yeah, I did, I, I would probably defer to Mr. Lavine. It was, that information was in the spreadsheets that he talked about, um, in his presentation regarding, when we talk about POPs, that's the, the number of people in the population that this site could cover at the various heights, together with the other objective, which is AT&amp;T's need to fill the gaps along the major arteries as well. So those are the two real coverage objectives, that's where we have significant gaps in coverage. And, and very often, problem sites are customer complaints, other times they are AT&amp;T's constant effort to optimize its network, to make sure that it's providing reliable service to its customers. And so it constantly monitors its network performance and where the gaps exist. So Martin, I don't know if you want to add on to that?
Um, in terms of data, I don't have any more to add up to that, I don't have customer counts or anything of that nature.
That was my question. Is the numbers somewhere?
Sure, yeah. I don't want to, and, and I could, just going to, just give you this, from recollection, we're speaking with this consultant. It's not just about your cell phone signal, it's about the data that's going on in the home. When you have, you know, if you have a household of three or four kids with parents, you know, um, the kid's on the phone, they get the tablets going, couple of kids doing homework. Homework and, you know, I got kids in, in the school program, they got to be online every night to do that. So it's not just, you know, don't think of this just as a, you know, he, he explained to me, and really, you think of a cell tower as a cell phone, you know? But really, when I thought about the amount of data, that's really, and, and, and that brought me back to when we were installing the 4G network for, for Verizon at Gillette Stadium, you know, they, they would tell me, you know, that was really the explosion of everybody, you know, downloading all this information. The guy's at a football game and he actually wants to watch it on TV at the same time to see the replays. And now this consultant's even talking about, not only are people just downloading, they're actually uploading with all the pictures and all the information they're sending out. The quantity of data is incredible right now. And that's something that, and again, this is from the consultant, that, you know, um, he, he was, he was talking about that, that need for that flow of data and the quantity of people in all these homes, so... And again, you know, I know he represents AT&amp;T right now, but you've heard him say, all of the four big carriers are going to probably jump on this if, if they get the requested height, so. Uh, I hope, I don't know if that helps explain this a little bit, or, I just thought that was, yeah, again, yeah, alright, I did the best I could. Go ahead, ma'am.
My name is Jack Williams, I live at 43 Maple Avenue, I have just one or two small observations. Uh, first of all, I took his numbers and I did look up, I couldn't find his census for 2000, but I did find the census numbers for 2010. And at 7%, we were talking about the addition of 633 people, which back to your point, isn't just, they're not all AT&amp;T customers, that's a percentage of the population. Which doesn't seem like a lot to me, but that's my personal opinion. And I understand your point about the data and that being, uh, a concern for most people in this town. And I don't think anyone would dispute that, I won't dispute that. I don't think we're sitting here arguing that there shouldn't be increased data in town. We don't think that there shouldn't be another cell phone tower in town if it's going to increase our productivity in our homes and on, in our car on a major route. Which usually only lasts about five minutes when you have a, a gap in coverage. But what it does mean is, we don't want it there. We would want it somewhere else. And I'm sorry if cost-effective, that doesn't make sense to AT&amp;T, Verizon, Dish, which is a satellite company, but that's beside the point. And other things is that we just don't want it there, we don't want it in the center of town, near a school, near our, right around where we are. And everyone's going to say, well, I don't want it anywhere that's close to me. That's not the point. The point is, it's in the center of town, his pictures, I don't know what he was looking at, but when you look at Suzerco's garage and you can see it, and then you go down to the beginning of, uh, right across from Bill's garage, and you're looking straight at Bill's garage, they're not even in the same direction. So I don't think we're getting a full picture, and I think they should really look at other locations. And I don't think any one of us would be here if that was the case. I just think where it is is the problem. I'm sorry, that's my, my perspective.
Well, don't be sorry. Perspective as well, so, yeah, that's what, what it's about, thank you. Chairman Abad raises his hand first, so you'll be next, ma'am, sorry.
John Rukicki, 17 Proudly Lane. First off, I want to thank your board for entertaining and, and adopting a motion tonight to have a, an independent consultant to, to look into this. I think that will help with a number of people and a number of their issues, so I, I thank you for bringing clarity to that. I also, I, I'm hoping, and knowing, Mr. Chairman, that you brought it up as your conversation with, and then the proposed consultant, I would ask you to ask him, is relative to this, this particular, uh, request and the citing of, and referencing of the various, um, uh, telecommunications acts and things like that, how applicable is the issue of data relative to any, any sort of telecommunications act overriding or guiding ZBAs to kind of undo their planning board actions or, or zoning regulations? There's, there is some concern in the, for lack of a better term, the internet, which says whether, whether data matters to the telecommunications act or whether it's simply telephone calls, as whether that's what triggers all this sort of, you know, uh, more, you know, relaxed behavior that you may have to fall under. I just ask you, I don't know the answer, but now that you have a consultant, you've had that conversation, I'd ask you to bring that issue up to get a, a good clarification on what is really required in, in, from a town's perspective to live within law.
Um, the one thing he specifically said, and, and I can't speak to the difference of cellular versus data, quite honestly, I, I just assume it would be the same, okay? You know, as far as required, that's just my assumption right now, I'm just telling you my opinion, but it means nothing. But in talking with him, um, he did say, he looks at all the FCC guidelines, he looks at our bylaws, he looks at their data and all their information, and he intertwines, makes sure that when our bylaw isn't superseding a law we cannot do, okay? And vice versa, he looks at the FCC communications and says, hey, there's really nothing, this is what they can do, there's really nothing you can do about it. I mean, that, that, those are the situations for certain things. And again, we didn't get into any specifics because it was just a, you know, a brief phone call to go over things. But, um, again, I think the specifics will be heard, once he gets this data and the information from Attorney Susan and, and he does his report, I think some potential questions that you're talking about might be answered.
Okay, thank you very much.
Uh, ma'am, you were next.
Me?
Yep.
Thanks. Carolyn Streeter, 11 Meadowbrook Circle. Just quickly to back up what Janice was saying, the resistance isn't to the tower, it's to the location of the tower.
Right.
The balloon test, the balloon was visible from my property and that wasn't depicted in the balloon test, there was no photograph from my property. There was a photograph from 4 Meadowbrook Circle, which is my neighbor, which showed that it wasn't visible. But I'm, that's my neighbor.
Do you have any photos of that?
Thank you.
You do, okay. Now send them to, send them to the maker or something, you know? Again, any of this data that you may have, we can give this to the consultant, you know, Mr. Gold, you're Mr. Gold, correct? Just want to make sure I get the right guy. Yeah, thank you. Um, he sent us pictures that he had, so again, we're going to take all that and we're going to give it to the consultant. I am not a photographic expert or, you know, guy that can tell where and how a picture was taken, but, um, you know... was taken, but, you know, if you want to upload that stuff and send it off to us, we'd be happy to send along and have him consider that.
Yeah, thank you, I will.
Sure.
And, I mean, I just think there's a lot of problems with the balloon test, even just scale, right? Like you go on vacation and try to take a picture of something really huge and show it, come back home and show it to someone, and it doesn't reflect, right? The, the trees, I can't help it, I'm sorry if this is a little obscure, but I'm in forestry, I know those mature white pines aren't going to be there long. Any white pines we're using to try to disguise this tower, they've got a short remainder of their lifelock. So, balloon test and two hundred properties within point four-four miles of the tower will be devalued, that's backed up by published studies, okay? So that's a big loss, not just to the residents who that would be extremely unfair to, but to the town, right, and collective revenue, real estate taxes. And then I hope the board realizes, and I have double fact-checked myself on this before bringing it up, but when we're talking about the heights of the tower, after the tower's built, it can go up another twenty feet without any public process, community input. So if we're talking about a hundred forty-foot tower, we should realize that could be a hundred sixty-foot tower, the lightning rod on top of that. Realize too, the property line is a hundred sixty-eight feet. Yours property line's a hundred sixty-eight feet from the tower, and that property line is ten feet or less from the curb of the school driveway. But, or if we look, if we're looking at that hundred and six-foot tower that provided fairly significant coverage, if you're looking at it that way, merely that, that could be a hundred and thirty-six-foot tower, okay? You can go up twenty feet without public process after it's built.
I'm not sure that if they need a variance, I'd, I'd have to research that. Because our bylaw is ten feet, I believe, fifteen feet over the tree line, and so they're requesting a variance to go up to the one forty-foot mark, and so I'm not sure if once you're outside that tolerable zone, that you can't, you can go up. I'm not sure about that, but that's something, again, the consultant can help us with, ma'am.
Yeah.
And we can figure that out and, you know, again, these questions, you know, we have something to, we can get him the information.
According, he'll know much by the media. According to what I've read, they, they wouldn't need a new variance on that.
All right, anything else? Okay, sir, you got that?
Oscar Motta, Thurston Hill, wrote, Mr. Hayes answered the question about the software he's using.
Yep.
But is it the same manufacturer that makes the software that the applicant is using? That wasn't clear, or at least I.
Well, he, he's working for the applicant.
Same, oh, okay. But they're using the same software?
No, this is, I understand your question here. Mr. Hayes has his own company, he does not work for C squared. C squared is separate company. So we have two different people here.
Oh, I was thinking Martin Lavine, I'm sorry.
So I don't believe you guys are using the same software provider, correct?
No, sir, I do not use commercially available software.
Okay.
Okay, and then I have another question. The, the map that was shown that has the overlying coverage and it didn't have the proposed coverage, was that showing what the church is putting out? And where is the church on that map? Is that the star that was on that?
Yes, that's correct, that was the star. But those maps that we talked about today did not have the coverage from the church. That was a plot that we talked about at the last hearing, three weeks ago, and we did show the small amount of coverage that we get from the church because of its lower height.
But that's going away, so you're not showing that in reference to this.
Correct.
If this tower gets destructed, that one gets destracted, so.
Right, exactly, we get decommissioned.
We can show both of them because, you know, they're not going to maintain both.
Were you here at the last meeting?
No, I wasn't.
Okay, the, the information you're asking is available, I believe it's all on the website, right, Tamika? Yeah, if you go to on the town website, they have, Tamika's uploaded, it'll have, show you the dot with the church with a smaller footprint, then it shows you a dot with the new tower, proposed cell tower, what the bigger coverage would look like.
Right.
All right, Mr. Gold?
David Gold, four Phillips Road. I wanted to talk about the balloon tests in terms of, I saw a picture that did display the balloon, it was taken from Main Street, but if you looked through two houses, you saw where my house sat, and I can say clearly that I'm going to get a, quite a view of the cell tower from looking out onto my garden, looking, I guess it's northwest, and other people too, and I noticed there were pictures of Forest Hill Drive where there was no sign of a, of cell tower. But if you go to the houses closest to the cell tower at the end of the street as you turn right off of, you go up Maple and then you turn right, those houses are, are right, are probably the closest residences to the tower, or the proposed tower. There's going to be some devaluation of those homes. And I've spoken to some appraisers, I've spoken to some realtors, and, you know, they dance around and understandably so, they're like, well, we can't really tell unless, until it's after it's built. So the question is, what happens after it's built is when you, when the rubber hits the road. And there's reports that show anywhere from, you know, negligible to twenty percent devaluation on properties that, where, you know, views are hindered by this commercial structure. So, you know, my house is pretty modest, it's probably worth a little over two hundred thousand. If it's on the lower end, if it's five percent, that's ten, twelve grand. So you can understand my concern about citing a tower, even if it's optimal, in an area so close to residences, not to mention businesses and schools, but particularly residents here. And I thank you very much for, for your actions getting consultant, and he's definitely impartial, I can tell you.
Yeah, it seems to be, thank you. Thank you very much.
John Rukicki, seventeen Proudly Lane. Just a quick question, I'm not as familiar with the plans of the tower or the requirements in this regards. Given the height that's been asked as part of this, does it require any sort of safety lighting on it or around it? Does it need a, does it need a blinky light?
I don't believe so. Attorney Susan?
No, it does not, the tower's neither lit nor marked. Marked is red and white. It does not require either one of those.
Not like the, the other one, Mr. Sullivan was referencing, the six hundred foot tower that we have done off by Campbell there. That's, that's lit up and.
Oh.
Right, typically anything over one ninety-nine needs to be lit.
Thank you. Sir, yep?
Jason Taylor, twenty-one Charlotte Hill Road. I just want to say, you know, it's, nobody's here to support this, and there's a bylaw that for the, you know, the first time somebody wants to go against it, I don't, I don't see the need to go ahead and break it, and I, I think that nobody can with a straight face say that it's certain that the radiation's harmless to kids. So what are we getting that we're going to risk that? And I just don't see the reason to go forward with that, I don't see the need for any of this, it seems like it just should be a no.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I feel the same way, just to make you clear. I talked about it at the first, well, I don't believe it was the first meeting, but I brought up the, well, that was the first meeting, I brought that up too, about the FCC ignoring studies for the last twenty-five years, so.
All right, all right, so no other comments at this time? We'll close that portion, public comment section. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're not closing the hearing, yeah? Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, okay. Gentlemen, Robert Liptick, you get your hand up on Zoom. Go ahead, we'll open this back up and let the public speak, continue to speak. Mr. Liptick?
I'm, I'm sorry, can you hear me okay?
Yep.
All right, I just want to reiterate what Mr. Sullivan said about the variance, that it's important that, you know, it has to have the real hardship like the bylaw says for variance, and I know in their application, the applicant does say that they have a hardship, but I, I think I don't know legal stuff very much, but you can't create a hardship, so I think just consider that strongly against having a variance. I have a couple of questions that you may know better than I, and that is that Phillips Road is a private road, then there's a driveway coming off of that going to this site. I'm not sure that's allowable in any of our bylaws. One, and then there's a shared driveway, or a common driveway bylaw, but I'm not sure that applies because it only applies to resident, residential areas. So I guess maybe you can consider those two things, please.
Okay, as far as having access off of Phillips Road, I believe that people that own that property have access, have right to access that road if they have frontage on that. I, I don't, I don't know if any bylaw or any law that states you couldn't build a house on there and just bring your driveway up off that, as long as you meet the requirements, right?
It's the petitioner's problem. If they, if we allow them to build something they can't have access to, then it's not going to work out.
Yeah, that really doesn't fall under the ZBA, it's kind of more of a building code issue, if there's a building code to that, but I don't, I don't, I don't know of anything like that, to be honest with you, and I, I don't think that would really be something that would, you know, you're not getting into curb cuts or anything like that.
Or, or traffic, or.
Yeah.
We, we consider those things, but not whether, whether or not they'll be able to legally access their tower.
So you're saying they'd have to get any board approval if needed?
No. No, they, they, it's like an A and I lot, you, you, you own property, I mean, that's like fourteen acres or something over there, so if they want to build something on that, they have right to access the road that, that they, that, this is twelve Phillips Road, it's not, it, it's part of the road, they're on the road, sir, I don't, I don't understand any other road, if you live on that road, you have access to that road.
No, the access is coming off of the resident house on Phillips Road, it's not from Phillips Road.
Yeah, that's done, that's, that access is allowed off of the driveway, off of the, I, I know some, my friend, I, I have a friend who actually owns a, owns a property that they have a cell tower, they come off of his driveway to access the cell tower. There's nothing illegal about that, if he wants to allow them on there.
But again, it wouldn't be part of the ZBA's job.
Yeah.
It's not part of our role.
And I, I thought it came off of the end of the road, I, I didn't think it came off of his driveway. I'd have to look into the site.
It's off the driveway, and I, I just wish you could look into it because the, the common driveway bylaw, that's only for residential uses, not for non-residential use.
Well, yeah, I don't think there's anything that states that a road is just for residential use, I mean, if, if.
No, no, a common driveway.
If a septic truck has to go up that road to pump, I mean, you know, it's allowed on the road to pump your septic tank. I mean, it's, it's a road.
The applicant wants to use a common driveway, I'm just asking you, is, is that legal or bylaw? In the common bylaw, there's a common driveway bylaw and it says nothing about non-residential use?
Peter, you got something to say?
Peter Crane Nate's Way, this is a single property that is serving both the residents and the tower, there is not a second own, a second parcel of land, therefore, it is not a common driveway. Access is across one part from Phillips Road, up the driveway that he has, to another access that he gave to get over to the tower. It is not a second property, it is not a second driveway, it's not a second access.
Thank you. So he's just allowing them access off of his driveway?
That's exactly correct.
Which, that's what I've seen before.
Yeah.
Kind of Boilstone, right there, off of one forty and two ninety, the big tower there?
That's how they do the one on Campbell Street. It's, it's, it's a, it's just an accessway.
Thank you very much.
Just for clarification, what we're doing here, twelve Phillips Road, we're, we're asking, he's asking to put a cell town, cell tower on his own property, and we're not subdividing, he's not subdividing this out at all.
Correct. He's leasing the property to them, but the ownership maintains.
Somebody else, got it, okay, yes.
Allowing access off of the driveway, do all that.
Yeah, so he's just putting something on to this property that's allowed, possibly allowed there. Yeah, okay, all right. Okay, ma'am, one more thing.
Thank you. Carolyn Streeter, eleven Meadowbrook Circle. So one thing that wasn't addressed when the plan changed after the town said no access from the school driveway and the access has to be from Phillips Road, is the use, would, I mean, Phillips Road is a mess, and so would road improvements need to be made to bring in the crane, the traxi excavator? And has that been considered? And where would that go? Would that go to the DPW?
Well, if that's a private road that goes on the, it goes, it goes on the, I don't, I, it goes on the, the people that live on the road, they're responsible for the maintenance of the road.
But not, not an upgrade to allow this to commit. You would not, if it's a private road, you would not, AT&amp;T or Blue Sky can't come to you and say, oh, you guys got to give us each a thousand dollars now because we want to bring a big, bring a, bring, bring in a big crane.
Are you concerned?
If they want to, huh? If they want to fix your road up for free, to, you know, at their expense to bring in, then they could absolutely do that, an improvement to, it's going to improve you, improve your, but I don't know that they need to do that or would want to, but they'd have to go through that, you know, process, but it wouldn't be an expense to the homeowners at all.
Right?
Just like building a house.
The homeowners are responsible for the road, not a private road.
Right, for maintaining it.
For maintaining it, if you want to repave it, regravel it, okay? That is the homeowner's responsibility on that, on that one entry.
I, I would imagine this road would need improvements to protect the sewer line, for instance. Imagine there's a sewer line running under that road before this type of equipment comes down the road.
I, I don't know that there's a sewer line there, and I mean, you know, any, any twelve inch gravel base will hold any, any, any piece of equipment that drives over a road, that's what's on every road for the most part, so I mean, you know.
Yeah, it is a pothole ravined mess that road.
Yeah. I'm sure that'll be something they'll have to address and deal with, but anybody that lives on that road will, is responsible for maintaining that road, or if the existing condition is beat to hell right now, I mean, that's, that's up to you people to do something about that and to, to recreate it, to fill those in. Some people get regrinds off of, when they, when they grind up the road on fifty-six, a lot of times those people dump the regrinds right on there, and that sets up, it's a nice hard surface, those types of things can be done, just to give you a couple ideas, okay?
But if the road in its existing condition is serving the residents who live on it just fine, but it's not going to serve this purpose?
That's up to them to deal with.
It's their problem.
Up to who?
That's their, that's their issue, it's not your issue of the fact that they may, they may find that they have to upgrade or do some improvements to the road at your benefit, yeah.
I've been told by the DPW, because I also live on a private road, that town rottling follows the state laws on private roads, and that each resident owns to the center line of the road.
It's a right of way, it's a, you do and you don't. You have rights, it's a right of way to access through the property.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
You pay taxes through the center, but it's like the same, I live on a town road and the town has an easement of the first thirteen feet of my front lawn, and anytime they want, they can come and decide, we're putting a sidewalk in, you know, and there goes the first, you know, three, four feet of your property, front of your property.
Yeah, I just want to stay on point here, as far as the roadway goes, ma'am, the existing conditions, they're, they're responsible for getting their equipment up through that, that road. If they do any damage, they'll be liable for that damage, any sewer or water lines that may be existing there. And then after, as far as the maintenance goes, it's just not much more than a pickup truck, you know, an F three fifty and F four fifty that goes up there and, and does their thing, so like anybody else would have in their driveway, that's what will go up there. But as far as any issues you have, you can take that up with these people at that time if they crush your sewer line or anything like that, okay? All right, and certainly talk to the town, I'm sure the town at that point would help you mitigate and get those, get these things fixed if they, they were found to be at fault for that, okay? All right, so at this time, close off the, the public hearing here. All right, so just kind of going forward here, attorney, the only thing I really haven't gotten into yet is reviewing the revised site plan as far as coming up off of Phillips Road and to the specifications of that road. But at this point right now, being seven thirty and we're going to have to have another hearing, I would just assume at this time could continue. I would just assume at this time, could continue that discussion. I'll have some questions and just go over some details on that for you, okay? At the next meeting, if that'd be all right.
Yeah, of course, and we do have Tom Johnson from Proterra, who's here tonight, but he can also be at the next hearing, to talk more specifically about that question.
Okay. Yeah, just because it's getting late here, and I don't, I don't want to keep these dragging out too long here.
Of course.
Just wanted to address one thing. Couple of people brought up questions about the variance. Under Mass General, Chapter 40 there, one of the reasons that a variance can be issued is due to topography. The town obviously has issues with topography when it comes to these things. So, a variance could be issued. Not saying we will, but it could be issued based on topography as a reason to have to put the cell town tower, move the cell tower.
Is it in the wireless bylaws, or?
No, that's Town, General, Mass General Law, Chapter 40. Reason for a variance is soil conditions, topography of land.
Hardships due to those.
Hard shifts, these are hardship things. So that's just, topography is obviously an issue in the town. Again, I'm not saying that we're going one way or another, just to point out that where the hardship would lie, that they would make an argument for, or could make an argument for.
Yeah, and just, you know, just keep in mind, folks, you know, Mr. Sullivan talked about 200 people at the town meeting to vote for that, okay? There's 12 people in here right now. So I know, I know you guys are against this, you know, this, this tower. But, you know, from the other perspective, you know, where are the other 180 people?
Not there enough to vote, though, but we are.
They're not here. And again, I'm just saying, because they're not here, does that mean they're against it, they're for it? I don't know, but they're not here. You guys are here, and that's important. I don't, not trying to say, you know, you 12 don't matter because the other 180 aren't here. I'm not saying that at all. But I think you have to look at it from that other perspective too, as well. That maybe there's a reason why a lot of those people aren't here is because they don't have a problem with it. You know, all the voters are notified, and if they're not here, then they don't have an issue with this. So I just think it's important to keep in mind that perspective, okay? Not saying they're right, just saying it's another perspective, all right? Okay, so at this time, we're all closed for public comment right now. I'm just, just wanted to touch upon the variance. You have variances because, you know, if this tower was in the middle of nowhere on a piece of property where no one was ever going to see it, what would the problem be, no matter how, how you built it, right? So that's why you have the variance, so things can be accomplished when there's, there's no reason, but when there's people against it, those are things we have to consider, and we will. All right, let's look forward to the next meeting here. What dates do we have available, Tamika?
Do you want to do June 8?
Are you available, Attorney Sosa, June 8?
Let me look, you don't mind.
The next two weeks are out of touch for me. I don't know what the board has here. But the earliest one I could do is the 8th, but I can also do the 15th.
Press the 8th is a problem for me.
Okay, how about the 15th then?
Yeah, 15th is fine.
That works for me as well this time.
Works for you as well?
Yes.
You're good, all right. Is the 15th, we should have a place open, right?
All right, and then we have, at that point, some information back from...
I would, I would be certain that, that, that time, he thought he could, he could get this done by the 8th. So I feel it's pretty certain that another week is only going to help him out, you know, considerably, and...
So just tell him the 8th, so.
Begin of the... Probably not a bad idea. And then we'll, we'll have time to review it too, as well, if it doesn't come last second.
Another thing, you know, on the...
And also see if he's available to come to that meeting.
One of the other things I noticed, like, I've been driving around and seeing these cell towers, all, you know, up and down 395, Connecticut, all through parts of, you know, Massachusetts, down that corridor. And it's really, it is a point of perspective where you take the picture from, or where you see. I've seen them, you know, 10, you're looking at it, you can see the thing fine, and you go 10 feet away, you can't see it at all. It's all, and I think that was proven by somebody's picture here. So it really, I mean, it's obvious that, yes, there are going to be places this thing is going to be seen from, and there's a lot of places where you, you won't see it from. So it's, you know, it is known that this will be visible from certain spots, if it was approved.
Okay, so do we need a continuance?
Yes, a motion to continue.
Okay, so do we have a motion to continue?
I'll make a motion to continue, you.
All right, do we have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Paul. Any discussion? All right, hearing none. Let's take a vote. All in favor to continue the hearing to June 15th at 6:00 PM? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right, that's unanimous, so the motion carries. So this hearing, and Tamika, do we need an extension from the applicant?
Um, we, there's a form that I'm announcing to continue the hearing. We do still have until July 13th.
Okay, so we're still within the window?
We're still within the window.
All right, terrific.
But probably at the next meeting, we would want to...
Well, that would be an issue, okay. All right, terrific. All right, so, so ladies and gentlemen, this, this hearing is going to be continued to June 15th at 6:00 PM.
Did you say June 13th is the time we have until?
July 13th.
Okay.
Yes.
Thanks. Now I understand. And, all right, terrific, thank you very much. Attorney, thank you again, all the consultants, thank you. Appreciate it, everybody here, appreciate your input, and thank you for coming. We'll see you in a few more weeks.
Thank you very much. Good night.
Have a good night, thank you, welcome. All right, next up on the agenda, I think, any new business? Any old business? Any correspondence mail or otherwise?
Well, that's actually for the next meeting. Jake's correspondent, city vibe, actually for tomorrow.
Yep, we'll save that for tomorrow. Anything else coming up, any other, any other business?
No.
Maybe we're getting around the corner here, maybe?
No, don't say too loud.
Yeah, Rick, you got anything else?
No, I'm good, thanks, Chris.
All right.
Make a motion to adjourn until tomorrow night at 6:00 PM?
All right, second?
Second.
All right, we got it seconded by Jake. Any discussion? None heard, all in favor? Ayes, ayes carried unanimously. Motion carried, thank you.